...22nd, 2011, the order. The next agenda item of number two, system comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address an issue that is not on the agenda. And seeing no one, we'll move on to a presentation of the GIS system. Mr. Banner and Carl Alexander.
I just wanted to introduce Fred Banner, our IT director, and Carl Alexander, who's our GIS supervisor, and wanted to show you tonight some of the additional capabilities that our GIS system has. We continue to build that and what is available not only to you and to our city team, but also to the citizens overall to look at the kind of information that we have on GIS and especially tracking capital projects, et cetera. So Fred and Carl, take it.
Good afternoon. What we're going to show tonight is this is all available on the website.
What Carl's going to do is go into a little more detail of some of the features and functionalities of the mapping capabilities that we have.
The first map that I'll show is a CIP for the City Capital Improvement Projects. It is available off the city's webpage. You just go to City Projects and then the City Projects web map. Page will open up, maximize here, showing the City of Franklin and then all of our engineering projects. When you open it up, it'll have kind of a little bit of information about our map and you can just hit OK and agree. All these stars that are on the map are the city of projects that we're mapping right now. Over here in the left-hand corner is a drop-down with all their names, or you can just type in a name. So you could type in like Nickel Mill Lane, click on it and it'll zoom right to that project. And you can click on that project and get quite a bit of information. Project description, ranking, phase, the type, the project manager, a lot of the starting completion dates, and a lot of the cost dates. And then also a status of that project. So anytime you want to check the status of any of the projects here at the city, you can just go to this map and kind of check that out. It has aerial photo of certain areas of all of City of Franklin with a hybrid that has the street names and parcel lines on it. Over here to the left is kind of a navigational toolbar. So anybody that's used Google, you can go in and kind of zoom in and zoom out real quick. Has a hand that you can pan around, and then also a globe that'll kind of give you the full picture of the City of Franklin, kind of see all the projects there. If you go over here to more, there's a little bit more data. This is a feature showing the major thoroughfare plans. So if you do need to see kind of the alignment of, say, Mack Hatcher or Carruthers Parkway, you can just turn this on and see how the alignment is, at least set for now. So you can go in and search by your address. So I can type in my address, and it'll zoom right to that. And you can go in and kind of see what projects are happening around your property and click on them and get more information. There is also a button, this right here is the top project. So if a project has a ranking between 1 and 10, just those projects will show up. And so if you're just wanting to know just about certain of those top projects, then you can easily get on, click on it, zoom to it, and get the same type of information. You can, just want to see, say, stormwater projects, you can just click here, see just the stormwater projects, and zoom on there. Or, say, I want to see all the transportation or water projects by different types. There's a draw and measure tool, a print tool. We have a Google Street View tool. So if anybody kind of wants to see what's going on around the area, they can click right here on the map and kind of pan around and see. You can actually do a full screen. So if you have some questions or just want to see what's going on, you don't necessarily have to go out.
What was that last thing? How'd you get to that?
Google.
It's this little guy right here. It's Google Street.
It's on the taskbar.
The Google.
On the top.
This little guy right here.
What is this symbol?
It's just a little like, little man.
Little Google guy.
Little yellow guy.
So just like you normally get on Google, it's that little man.
And that's in real time?
This is from Goog- I think Google did Franklin.
No, if you go stand on the side of the road, you're not. You can't. You can't. You can't.
Google Maps are not updated very often. My neighborhood still shows my daughter a three selling lemonade. That was my dream.
They have me in the yard.
It depends on satellite picture, whether, how the data is.
And also, we have T-DOT construction showing on the map. So if there's construction going on in the city that might not be in the city, you can go in here and see what the state, their status, what they're doing in the City of Franklin while they're doing it. So it's also incorporated in this map.
So to give status or completion date for T-DOT?
There is one on here, at least for this phase of.
Expected that.
11/15/2012, so. But yeah, it actually is showing all the projects for the stages. You can kind of see around there. And the other application that I'll show is from off the planning page. Go to the zoning ordinance. This is a zoning application where anybody can go and see their property information and zoning of that area. The same has a splash screen at front that kind of gives a little description of the map and kind of lets you know who you need to talk to. We have a legend here on the side that you can zoom in and click anywhere on the map and it'll show you the zoning of that area, give you an ordinance number, effective date if the zoning has ever been changed, changed there. You can also search by an address. Right here, we have more data. So you can turn zoning off and say you want to turn the floodplain on, so you can see if the property is in the floodplain. You can see if there's a zoning overlay, so height overlay. Turn the legend back on here, so you can see all the overlays for anywhere in Franklin or any of the property. You can search by parcels, by subdivisions, or by street name and just type it in and do a parcel search. You can also graphically search. So if you wanted to see some information about, let's say, this parcel.
Can you search by parks?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Parks.
Parks, not on this map.
On the project map, could you look at parks?
We have another map that has parks on it. This will give you a little basic information about the parcel, but it's hyperlinked into the county's assessors' page. So any information that the assessors has on this parcel, you can hyperlink and just click and it'll take it a couple of seconds. But now you can see all the assessed values, property information, sale information on any of the parcels in Franklin that we have. And it also has Bing Street View and character areas if you want land use information for that parcel, those parcels. And then again, you can just click on a parcel to get land use information. So, and I will go ahead and show third map that does have parks. We, it's kind of a green, call our green map, but it has a lot of the green information Same has a splash screen, but we're showing, when you open up the application, it shows bike stations, recycling center drop-offs, bike boughs, EV charging station, farmer markets in the city. There's also a multi-use pass and bike pass that are in the City of Franklin, as you can see here. Also has find address, has all the city parks. And you can click on a park and it'll actually hyperlink to the city's webpage about that park to give you some more information about Fieldstone Park and what's available at that Dog parks, same, click on a dog park, zoom to it, click and get more information off the webpage. City of Franklin Green Partners are all on this application. So you can kind of see here in the left, if they gave us their website, it has a link to their website that you can also click on any one. Mary Dees. It also tells their level, so if they're gold or platinum, kind of their status with the gold partners. And then also, this is kind of a solar probability for buildings that we did for the entire city. And as you can see, open up the legends here.
At solar field lease, we use that information. I think we showed you that as part of that presentation too, from that same study.
Mm-hmm, yes. So if somebody comes in and wants to know maybe the probability of solar on their house, they can open up this application and kind of see. I mean, this is all downtown, so it's pretty flat, so you can tell. Kind of see where the roofs slide and things like that, put the areas on it. It also has Google Street View. You can print any maps, do any sort of drawing on any of our applications.
What do you mean drawing?
Um, if you wanted to do a markup, you could draw on there, you could actually write on there.
And do you, can you save it to like a PDF after you do that, or?
Every of our applications, yes. You can print them out and it'll show, it'll show, you know, it'll all, everything that you wrote or did on that application will be on there.
But you can't save your work?
The green map doesn't, but I'm pretty sure that the, you can save your drawings. So if I did like a drawing of a certain area, I'm pretty sure that you can save your drawings. Yeah. You could actually save it as a graphics layer and you could even email it to us and we could actually, somebody else could open it back into an application and see. So we get them sometimes if somebody has a question about one of our maps or a problem or want clarification, then they'll just save it and email it to us and then we can actually open it back in and kind of see what they're talking about. Some of the ones that we have internally, we can save them out as JPGs. Actually, I think you can on the city's, uh, the projects map. Yeah, so you can print any, just by printing them out, anything that you put on there, we'll save that out. Save those out as PDFs.
Any questions, Carl?
So this, again, this is available on the city website. Any citizen that wants to go through it.
Sure.
And the main sub thing is city projects.
Well, you can get it, you can do a search. You can just key in maps. You can go to the IT, click on under Government, MIT, and you see GIS. You can go to City Projects and get it, so.
Just several ways.
Yeah, it's by the departments that may be, or areas that may be specifically involved, but you can also get through the IT section as well.
Just key in maps.
Yeah, GIS, we kind of have all three of them there together. And then we also have some of the standard PDF maps that we have for.
This is off the IT part. So you see the interactive ones, then you see just the PDFs. And then what we have next is the data request.
Fred and Carl and their team continue to push more information and more capability to this system, working a lot with our departments in identifying useful information so that it helps us do our job, but also gives the citizens more tools as well.
Right, because the citizens, you know, often they don't know where to get information. And once they learn how to use this, you know, they won't have to wait for us to go back to them and say, well, look at this or that. This is a good tool.
Does this also help like developers or builders or things like that? Because they can use these maps to communicate.
Our zoning map gets used between 50 and 70 times a day, and about 40% of that is not city staff.
I've used it several times.
So it's, it's quite a bit.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Carl. Good job.
Thanks, Fred.
Next presentation from Building and Neighborhood Services regarding short-term storage units.
I'm going to have Gary Lufman and Molly Pike join us up here. The purpose of this discussion is to really share with you an issue that we're working about, working on, and talk about some of these issues and some options going forward and some things we ought to look at, get you thinking about it, giving us some additional direction and feedback as well. So turn it over to Gary.
During the long process to adopt the present zoning ordinance, several issues came about from the public and other staff members that tractor-trailers, containers, and pods were popping up all over the city. We recently conducted a inventory of our city. We found over 200 pods, containers, or the rear portion of a tractor-trailer scattered throughout 150 properties. We had already removed at least 30, and they're growing daily. So as we move forward in this type of corrective measure to remove these, according to our zoning ordinance, we wanted to bring to your attention just how serious it is and possibly feedback from some of the property owners that may come from this. So we'd like to show a few pictures of what's in our city today to give you an idea of what's out there.
A lot of these photographs are just from the inventory that we did. We had a number of people in our department that were part of this inventory and in the process of their daily routine and going out and doing inspections. Also had a portion of the city where they did an inventory of certain items. As Gary said, we were looking at mainly containers and tractor-trailer trucks and outdoor storage.
Molly, does this include commercial and residential?
Yes, yes. We tried to go everywhere and pretty well covered the city, and I have no idea where I'm supposed to point this.
That works, that works.
Let's see. And again, I'm just going to click through this real quick because we found this widely across the city and wanted to make sure you all were aware of this and aware of the fact that these trucks are here illegally. They are parked illegally according to our current standards, that they are not permitted to be parked, that they can park and unload, but for longer than that, they are not supposed to be located. We have a lot of trucks that you'll see a situation like this where it's basically been converted to permanent storage. And here is next door to that property that was just shown. Oh, look in the distance here. What is that in the distance? If you can see that with the sun, that is a handful of tractor-trailer, trailers. Oh, and also used for signage.
Next to the road.
Next to the road, right. Then we also have containers that are popping up. And let me go back to the last one. Look at the height of that tractor-trailer. The back of that trailer is taller than a container because of the wheels and the... So here is a vacant lot that has been used for storage. But we also have in general commercial areas, a lot of containers that are being set out in different locations for storage. Pods are being used. And again, according to our current standards, pods or in temporary containers like this are permitted, but they are only permitted for 30 days over a five-year period.
Do these people come in and ask for permits, or they just do it?
That's where we're heading in our conversations, we get further on.
They just do it.
They just do it.
They just do it.
Probably not a permit for something that's not legal.
But that's exactly the direction that we're going. So we wanted, first of all, to bring this to your attention. Here's a good example of how a construction dumpster and some storage units are almost blocking the rear access. And if there was an emergency situation and fire had to get behind here, it might be a major problem. But the reason, I mean, ultimately, the reason we're seeing containers and trucks are because businesses are finding they need more storage. And so we are also having situations like this pop up where behind buildings, you'll see things just stacked around outside or in front of buildings. Oops, sorry. I think we're all pretty familiar with most of these sites. It can also be plant material, seasonal materials that we will see.
I thought seasonal was okay.
It is okay.
Yeah, seasonal is okay, right. It's the only thing that doesn't need to be covered.
Parking lot.
Right, right. But now, we're looking at commercial, there are residential though also problems?
Yes, yes.
But if it's in the parking lot, it's not okay?
Not acceptable in the parking.
Vegetation is not allowed in the parking lot, taking up parking spaces.
Required parking.
What about seasonal stuff in fire lane areas?
No. They have to be set behind the fire lane area.
And if they're on a paved service, if they're on the, for example, the front sidewalk, they have to allow enough accessibility in front of them.
Do you have other photos?
Well, I do. This is an example of a grease recycling container, and you know, these are supposed to be screened, but we see these all the time. And then there is a lot of interest in recycling. This is a makeshift recycling container. You know, it's something we really might want to think about, you know, requiring we have all sorts of different types of recycling containers that do pop up.
Where is that? Do you know what that is?
Which one?
Container.
That container?
The blue recycle.
It's in Cool Springs.
It's a home improvement store.
Is that, is that legit?
Just a drop-off of clothing.
Like my thrift store or Thriftsmark.
Right. But on the good side, I did want to show you a location where they're putting in a screening fence. They're having a, an outdoor area that is going to be used for storage, and we told them what the requirements were. And so even though this fence did not require a permit, they are meeting our requirements to screen the use that is, has yet to go in this particular location.
And this is in a heavy industrial district?
Yes.
Clear.
And this is across the street from some of those.
Stacked stone wall in a heavy industrial district.
Is this near, is this all industrial, or is there any residential near here?
No, this is all industrial.
All industrial.
Yes.
It's just stone columns.
Yes, stone columns.
So this would be appropriate.
And this is their choice?
We've had locations do faux stone.
There is a tow-in lot going in behind you, so that's why. Are they doing it for security reasons too?
Yes, yes.
It's on data.
That is all the slides that I have, yes.
Can you go back to some of those slides?
Yes.
I've got a couple of questions for you on some of them, like the first secretary.
What in particular did you say?
Beginning.
Oh, the beginning, okay. Do you want to, can you take it back to the beginning? This is legal.
Yeah, I was going to say. I don't know what the problem there is. Okay, continue on.
Why was it legal? Because it's.
It's because it's.
Because it's temporary?
It's a storage loading dock.
That's a loading dock.
Loading and loading.
Yes.
All right.
Now, if it's stayed there for an extended period of time, it wouldn't be legal.
Does that have wheels on it?
Yes.
Are they collecting food for the hungry?
No, they've made a delivery to Kroger.
Yes, they're making the delivery.
That's just a.
The stock guys.
That's a loading dock.
Has nothing to do with hunger.
No, no. No, that's just.
Kroger does.
They're feeding people.
Yeah, they brought a bunch of food to Kroger. So we could buy it.
Molly, can you go to the next, next one, two, three, or four down? I don't know. Okay, stop right there, I will. Can you give an example there? Now, is that taking up parking spaces or?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so in other words, if it's in a parking lot, it's going to be taking up parking spaces per se?
It's not allowed to, correct.
How about the next one?
So if that was behind a screen fence that's not parking, is it legal or not legal?
Well, those were trailers, so they're not legal.
Okay. But it, the way the picture is positioned, it looked like where nobody was going to park anyway, because it was away from the entrance of the door.
Mr. Lufman, are you here to tell us that you're about to crack down on this using existing codes and you are preparing us for the phone calls that we're going to get? Because everything that you showed us that's a problem, we already passed a law against.
That's correct.
So you don't need any legislation.
That's correct.
You just want to warn us that we're about to start getting phone calls, you're about to start writing tickets and bringing the people to court.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
I think there's a second part to that, though, is a discussion about, do you want to have an avenue for some level of permission for a short-term use or a some, you know, do you want us to explore something along those lines that provides some outlet with some controls in terms of timing and conditions to provide for some opportunity to do this? Because right now, there's a kind of a bright line. You can't do it.
How about this? How about this? We send, we have, we create a letter that comes out from Mr. Lufman that tells somebody that pursuant to code section, whatever it is, the following is in violation, boom. And we tell them what it is, and we ask for their compliance, and we tell them what would comply. And if they have any concerns, comments, or requests for, you know, if somehow this creates a hardship on them, let us know. I don't want to go stumbling around in the dark making rules that, I mean, none of us runs a business, as far as I know, that requires truck deliveries or pod storage units on site, okay? So I don't really feel like I know what they need that we could give them that's different than what the rules currently require. I'd like to, I'd like to be polite about our enforcement efforts instead of just going out and writing them a ticket and bringing them into court. I'd like to let them know. Most people, in my experience, if you tell them what the rules are, are going to either try to comply or tell you why the rule maybe should be different. So a nice letter from them tells them, look, you're not in compliance, this is where you're not in compliance, this is how you could be in compliance, and if you have any thoughts or if you, you know, if this works a hardship on your business, let us know. Because, I mean, most of what I saw is fairly commonplace stuff almost anywhere else and not against the rules. We've made it against the rules, that's fine, but we need to, before we start making changes legislatively, I'd like to know that those changes were responsive to the legitimate needs of the business and not just more stuff that we thought was good.
If there's legitimate need for some storage or for them to park a pod there more than 30 days or some storage, can they become, can they get into compliance if they took out some parking spaces if they didn't need those parking spaces, if they weren't required to have it, and say they needed an area of three or four parking spaces and they still weren't in compliance, if they took those parking spaces out?
Again, as Dana was saying, presently, they're not allowed at all.
Right. Well, I'm getting at what if kind of solutions, because I'm seeing some needs.
We do it at Christmas time.
I was going to say, that's what we need to mention, that we do see seasonally a big increase. And we do allow during the Christmas season, but again, our ordinance does not.
Right. Well, I'm trying to figure out from a business standpoint, like Dana said, what some of these needs may be, and maybe they'll have to tell us, and then we can address those as they come up. Because Eric, you were mentioning some of those, I was trying to figure out some examples that you might be thinking about.
I think that exact kind of thing where you would maybe allow for a seasonal additional storage, that sort of thing, and we're glad to get the feedback. But right now, it doesn't provide it at all. We sort of work with people because we know that's the reality of a very busy Christmas season, but we also don't want to have, you know, standards that we're not really fully enforcing too. So we want to hit the right balance of something that's maybe a little more practical than we have on the books, but also. we have on the books, but also maintains the kind of standards we want to have. So, that's the dialogue we're trying to start here, I guess.
That one, finish up with that. That one pod that we saw behind that one building, it's sort of an L-shaped or, well, no, actually, it's, goes in.
Just break that up and I'll be okay.
I want to know if, if that one, now, say that, the one on the left, the beige one, what if they needed some storage back there? They clearly couldn't park that there more than 30 days in the rear of the building? Is that correct?
But they're staying years.
Right, I know, I know of two or three places that have been there for years.
That's my question, when did the rule change? Was it to accommodate the introduction of pods?
No.
You made mention of we changed the rules.
Well, it came in as part of our comprehensive zoning overhaul. We may have had something.
January 1st, 2008.
But, but we had a lot of that where there was no, where it had to be screened years and years and years.
The old guidelines, as we call it.
But there, I used to work adjacent to a big box store years and years ago, 1991 to 2002. There were always tractor trailer trucks parked behind there, and there were always a situation in the spring when it was flower season that they would take over their parking lot, they would coordinate off with what have you, but, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. So, I think my concern is, is now all of a sudden, and I can't tell you any time between that 1991, 2002 era, but to go back and all of a sudden say, we've decided we're gonna crack down on this, I think your letter is definitely the fairest way to go.
Well, that's what we're presently doing, we do send letters out.
And have you gotten responses?
Yes. Most of them are cooperating, there's a few that are upset.
But we're addressing it because it's gotten out of hand.
If you want, if you want the, if you want the consensus, you know, blessing to go out and step up enforcement, go ahead.
Sure.
Just, you know, realize that we're gonna get some pushback and we need to work with these people because, you know, Judge Taylor doesn't want 100 angry big box store managers down there all complaining about the same thing.
Trying to pay a $50 fine.
Well, I might rather pay the fine anyway.
But the time to pay it.
Well, it's not seasonal.
Alvin Martin.
If a person is redoing a house and needs a pod to store their furniture, is that allowed?
Yes.
So, they can put that in their yard and store their furniture? But that's a permit that they get for that?
Except sometimes they show up on the street and sidewalk instead of in the yard.
Yes, we, we do regulate where they go. We don't want them in the front yard or on the street.
Is that renewable? That's a problem. Is that renewable?
Well, as long as they're having construction.
So, if they had construction for 60 days, would it be allowed?
Yes.
And they say they needed it for another 10 days, do they have to get re- permitted?
Now, we would continue it, we would extend it.
So, small commercial, low business.
Need to bring us back some stuff.
There'll be some more discussion to follow in, in terms of ideas and options if you want to make any other changes on these issues too, so.
Number five, consideration of event permit for Dickens of Christmas sponsored by Heritage Foundation Downtown Franklin Association. Is everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Number six, consideration.
Well, Gary was up here, we should have done the Christmas.
We'll be moving a pod in the yard. Next is consideration of event permit for Christmas parade sponsored by Kiwanis Club on December the 3rd. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, number seven, consideration of contract. 2011-0162, a contract between City of Franklin and IDT Plans LLC for electronic plan application use and service lease, service level lease agreement in amount of $15,000. Mr. Gurr.
This is, as Vernon's coming up here, this is something we did budget for with anticipating bringing on either the purchase of software or the use of an online, you know, web-based system that'll help us do electronic plan review and processing, and I'll let Vernon take it from there, but this is an exciting opportunity for us.
Thank you, Eric, and good evening. It really goes back a couple of years where some of our employees took some existing software applications and creatively configured them that would allow us to review, receive and review plans electronically. Well, inherently, there's some problems with that in-house solution, although it's been working fairly well. And after we used it for a year and discussed, you know, the advantages of what a solution like that has, we started to entertain vendors that provide this for other communities and eventually settled on idtplans.com. They're a provider of an electronic system hosted wholly off-site and that which we can lease and really test drive for a couple of years for a very minimal amount, and as Eric mentioned, we have budgeted for that. They serve the, for example, One City, Cary, North Carolina, they serve the state of Kansas, a couple departments for them, and a couple private companies that do work in reviewing plans for cities. So, what this allows us to do is hopefully after the first of the year, begin rolling this out to developers and building contractors to submit their plans electronically, allow our staff to review them and return them, and really avoid handling all the paper and the multiple copies that I shared with you in my memorandum. And then, we can decide in a couple of years whether we want to make a bigger purchase. And as far as, as I, as I did point out, we're leasing it. So, the company based in Tucson is responsible for responding to any glitches that, that might occur, but it's also hosted off-site too, so there really isn't any cost from I, from us from an IT standpoint except really our existing hardware.
So, you anticipating efficiencies, time-saving, those kinds of costs?
And that's exactly what we want to measure over this, these couple of years as we start engaging more developers that have expressed an interest to do things electronically.
This is a good bit under budget. We budgeted $35,000 for something like this, and so, glad that this is a good bit under and saves us also a lot of the upfront costs associated with some of the software options. So, this makes this a good place to start.
And we'll also be able to let you look at some of those applications from the confines of your home too, if you want to, so.
Alvin Skinner.
So, basically, this will be $15,000 a year for a couple of years for us to, to test it to see if we like it. Do we have any idea what it would go up to after the test phase is over?
The, the cost for applications similar to this are around $100,000.
If you did the software?
If we did purchase the software and then the, the hardware, the storage, if we were to host it onsite, would be added on to that. So, we're very cautious and proceeding very prudently to make sure this is a solution that saves us time.
You would likely have a maintenance cost with the software purchase that's somewhere around this kind of cost annually anyway through that solution. So, that's why the web-based has a lot of appeal in terms of efficiency.
After a couple of years, we decide to go with something else, do we have historical access for data that we've used for this so that we can bring that up in the future as?
To transfer if you did something.
Right. That we've done under this process.
The, the storage of, of plans during the review process is off-site and held a little bit after those plans are approved. Once we approve them and accept them, then we will transfer them to our, our own storage.
Okay. Because sometimes.
It really serves the review process.
Right.
Which is on base, that you may have heard of. So, it's, it's really just the review process, once the plans are approved.
It goes to our store, okay.
In the end, just to give you a little better idea, once the plans are approved and we send, the system sends back notification to the applicant, the applicant can send that electronically to the, to their vendor that prints those copies for their contractors or to their contractors to review for estimates. So, you're really reducing a lot of, of paper, which is really the value to design professionals and developers of not having to make hard copies.
Number eight, consideration of contract award to Five Points of Franklin, Tennessee, and U.S. Able Life of Little Rock, Arkansas for both voluntary employee benefits and Section 125 Plan Administration for an initial one-year term of service to commence January 1st, 2012 with options to extend. I just shut it off there, it was getting too long.
That's good, yeah. You can give us the shortened version. I'll let Shirley and Tammy talk about this.
I think everyone knows, Tammy, it's, she's our benefits manager. Do you want?
Sure. We conducted a request for proposals. Thank you. In September, we issued a request for proposals for voluntary benefits carriers and a Section 125 Plan Administrator. This is actually something that is offered to our employees. These are certainly voluntary and there's no, there's no cost, no financial impact to the city. These benefits are deducted from the employee's paycheck if they elect those, and then they are submitted to U.S. Able. So, the, this RFP was conducted, Cheryl Morgan, our employee benefits consultant, evaluated the proposals received and recommended Five Points benefits and USA, in conjunction with U.S. Able for that, for that proposal.
Do you want to give some examples of what these voluntary benefits are?
Sure. Some of the voluntary benefits are, for instance, voluntary group term life insurance, a cancer policy, accident policies, short-term disability, and the voluntary group term life, the employees have the option of also not only obtaining additional life insurance on themselves but on their family members as well.
Plan 125?
Yes.
Section 125, is that, describe all those things you just said.
Okay. The Section 125 Plan Administration is done, that's really more like a cafeteria-style plan where the employees may elect to have their insurance benefits deducted on a pre-tax basis, which is a cost-saving feature for them. And also, they have the option of participating in the flex spending accounts for medical and dependent care expenses.
Go ahead, Alvin.
They have this all explained to them, all of the employees have this particular plan explained to them, they have an opportunity to understand it. Do they, can they rethink it the following year or is it?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an annual thing?
It is.
They are, we normally meet in departments with a small group and then they're talked to one-on-one, and they either have to elect it or waive it. And it's explained to them, and they're told that they can do their insurance pre-tax dollars, and we tell them that, you know, that lowers their income for tax purposes, so they pay less taxes on it. They're also explained which each benefit and what it covers and what their options are and the cost. And then, they can elect a partial points of it or, or reject all of it, so they get to select what they want.
Very good.
Thank you.
Number nine, consideration of purchasing green building and earthquake insurance coverage for police headquarters. Premium cost of $22,735.
Earthquake?
Yes, sir.
Those are some of the peril we have to be paying for.
This is essentially a deficiency or a hole that we identified within our property insurance overall, and Rodney, our risk manager, and Shirley, as part of her departmental responsibilities have looked into this and come up with a solution that really net cost is around $3,000, but I'll let them take you through the basic coverage that this provides us.
Right now, our premium for July 1st with our current provider was 16, a little over 16,000, so we've basically gone halfway through the year, so we'll have a refund of that. We estimate that refund to be around 800, 200, that we could put towards this premium of 22,000, which would leave us a balance, we figured about $3,000 because we also get prorated for the six months that we did miss with this new insurance provider, Travelers.
Talk about the coverage that this provides us that we don't currently have.
Well, of course, we all know that this, the police headquarters is a sustainable building which requires a leadership in energy and environmental design, the LEED certification. And part of that process, there's, there's always going to be extra cost for maintaining those types of equipment that we have for that building, which if we did have an earthquake or a fire damage or any type of peril wind damage, that there's, there was an exposure that we, when we're examining our insurance coverages there when it comes to certifying that coverage. You have the actual property of 1.5 million, the whole system cost, but to get that back into certification for, I think it's a gold standard that we have, we found an exposure of about 119,000 that was not in the coverage. So, that means that we would have to pay out 119,000. That's including the vegetation on top of the roof that's up there. So, we had some exposures on that part as well as we felt that, you know, with the issues that's been going around in, you know, Oklahoma with earthquakes, Japan earthquakes, something to be prepared for for us, we were not, we didn't have enough coverage for that, that facility of 29 million, you know, we, we weren't even close to having the proper coverages for that if we did have an event here. And the more we looked at it, we only have for our entire city structures, we were reported about two point, or 280 million dollars, we only have 1.5 million for coverage for earthquakes, so now we're looking at trying to get at least 15% coverage of all of our city properties, if not up to 25%, just in case. And the costs, well, you know, are, are not that expensive. I think when we start looking towards other types of coverages and exposures that we have, one of them is, also, you know, we had the fiduciary that we're gonna talk about later on was one of the exposures that we had. We're looking at cyber risk liability is another exposure that's there that we need to find coverage for. So, we're in the process of really analyzing our, our overall risk program and refinancing, financing our risk program is something that we're looking at trying to do, and this is part of that process. So, we just wish, consider accepting this bid from Travelers for this program.
Alvin Burge.
Do you have writers on these insurance policies like the cyber risk and those things? Or should we be looking at an insurance policy that covers cyber risk, earthquake, all these things together and get one policy that covers them, or do we have a major coverage with all the different writers? And I've got two other questions for you.
Right now, we're, we're looking at options for the city for this upcoming year. We, apparently, currently, we're with the pool and there are, there are line, insurance lines that are in place, but again, for example, what you said, there's, you know, there's our exposures that are there that we don't have coverage for, and if we go out to the, we go out to the markets, we're gonna be able to really look at the markets and see what's most effective and efficient, cost-effective and efficient line item that we have based upon what our needs are, is what we're analyzing right now.
So, you're gonna look at one major coverage with umbrella policies or one major coverage with?
What we're looking at is we're gonna take on some liability, we're gonna take on more risk because we can, based upon the trends that we've examined, which we'll have more of a detailed report in the future for you. And then, so there's gonna be a, there's probably gonna be a blend of fully coverage in one or maybe have an excess in the other based upon, again, whatever, when we come out with our trends, what we could, you know, what best fits our needs as a city.
So, you're gonna bring us up options on this?
We will bring you options when we go to that.
Then the other, okay, go ahead.
We have just looked and had an analysis of our risk, and we do have, we just met with Eric yesterday as well as Mr. Truell to outline our plan for the upcoming year and to bid out all lines of this insurance and to see, because we do have several gaps.
Wide variety of, we'll look at a wide variety of options. I think it'll be a pretty comprehensive bid to look at both kind of the approach we've taken over the last several years, but also what other options are out there in the market, what other holes might we have in our existing coverage and what are the trade-offs and decisions related to that?
So, you're gonna look at those and bring those to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, a couple things. Actually, I did some research in this just recently, and experts in the seismic activity have indicated that the chances of earthquake in the area in the future here has actually increased.
Yes.
It's actually been noted that seismic activity, we're under, actually, we are in a new, what they call the New Madrid Fault, and it extends from Missouri to Georgia and from the sea, from the shore up to Kentucky. Then we're in the middle there almost, not quite, but, you know, to the northern part. So, and in the last four or five years, actually, the increased seismic activity's been quite great. So, yeah, so to clarify, so I, I understand the need for that, but to clarify, there's two things I want to know. Clarify the repairs versus the recertification. So, this 119, does that include the repairs or? So, this 119, does that include the repairs or just the recertification?
Recertification.
Just, okay. Then, the other question I have is what features in the LEED certification actually would be critical to restore? That's my one question. What features would be critical to restore? And number two, outside that $119,000, how, would it be important to restore those features or not?
Well, the way the building operates, it has a self-sufficient type watering system. It has retaining vaults for the water, the thermal energy that's involved. So, all the components, whatever is broken, needs to be repaired. And that's covered right now. The actual property itself is covered. What is not covered, what we wanted to, this is what brought this to the surface during this examination, is we need to have coverage for the recertification process so we would not have to come out. $119,000 that we haven't budgeted for, we don't, you know, those are things that we need to put in place to have that covered.
Okay, question on that. That's exactly what I'm getting at. Explain to me what, why, and I know we like this LEED certification and there's perks to that and there's advantages, other, in other words, advantages. But is it critical, even though we repair that, the water system and everything you just said and other features as well, even though it's critical, we would repair those, which we'd have to repair them, is it critical to spend the $119,000 to recertify it? I mean, what if we didn't recertify?
I guess I'd say with a small amount of insurance, you don't have to make that decision. That gets to be part of the property insurance itself.
Well, what are the pros and cons of recertifying it?
Well, if you want to maintain a LEED status for your building, you need to do that.
And what does that get us?
It certifies and verifies that the sustainability aspects of the building are functioning appropriately, properly. And this is, including the earthquake cost, this is virtually, you know, a pretty small amount of insurance to get that additional coverage. And then you don't have to worry about that issue.
I'm just trying to figure this out because I understand that. But like Nissan, they did everything but they didn't certify the building. They have all the features but they didn't certify because they want to spend the extra money. Okay. So, how critical is it that we spent $119,000 just for the recertification? Do we actually, in the chances that we need it? Chances are, we could go 20 years, 30 years and never need it. Of course, the 31st year, we might need it. But we could spend all this money and I don't know what the cost ratio will be. And that's what some of the things you're going to have to bring back to us. But I'm just saying, is it critical, even though we restore all those features, is it critical to spend the money to get it recertified? Because what is the recertification going to get us? Extra money off insurance policy? What does it get us? That's, I'm just arguing that.
I think the reason we looked at it was because this board felt that it was necessary and important for us to have this building as a LEED certified building. And this insurance is only going to be about $3,000 more. It covers that and we, that would be a decision for this board. But we looked into that. And please correct me if this is not, because you all did elect to have that, a LEED certified building.
Now, we did things, value engineering within the project itself that saved us money that got at that very issue. But the board's policy has been to where it's practical to have LEED certification. You've done that with this building. This provides a low-cost insurance to maintain that certification. As part of the restoration that happens with the property.
I'm not saying I'm pro or against that. I'm just being the devil's advocate here, trying to get the facts out on the table so we can have all the facts we need to, when you bring that stuff back to us, to make the decision. Is it critical in the event, and the event may never happen, but in the event that we needed it, is it critical that we want the recertification? And so, what you're saying, every year will be $3,000 extra.
It'll be whatever the market says it is.
Well, the $3,000, I mean.
Could I, wait, could I ask a question? It's not $3,000 more, it's $6,000 more per year, isn't it? It said that.
Well, it's because of the timing of the.
No, no, no. What I'm just saying, it says that now we're paying $16,585 and that it will be $22,000. So, that's actually, I just want to make that comment. It's actually $6,000. But no, but I'm just saying that per year, it will actually be $6,000.
Well, we don't know because we're bidding out here.
Yeah, you bid it out every year, it's going to be whatever it is.
When we have a full, if we get coverage through, and we don't have to have an additional coverage for our gaps, it may very well be changing.
And you've got to remember, we also, that increases included the earthquake. There's floods in there as well. They have flood, confiscated goods. There's a majority of other items in there that comes with it. Utility services, sewer and drain backup, again, confiscated property. Terrorism is also included in that. Utility services, property in transit, personal property. There's other, if you look at the actual, what was attached to it, it will show you each coverages that are in there. It's multiple coverages.
None of those were covered in the policy that we have.
Yeah, we focused on the LEED because that's a unique feature of this building, but it's a whole lot of other coverage, including the earthquake, et cetera, that's a lot broader than what we currently.
That was on the schedule.
If those numbers, those numbers come back the same with the NSC, it'll be $6,000 a year, not $3,000.
Yeah, if we hold where we are.
If we hold where we're at.
Alderman, Martin.
We're going to rebid.
And if we, could, that would be what, an increase of what, 30, 40%?
$6,000.
Well, I mean, over 16, isn't that, it's at least 30%. Closer to 40, isn't it?
You've got to look at, when we put this for bid, that's, this won't be a standalone with one company. It's going to be the entire city structures, all the buildings. So, there'll probably be a reduction in that as well when it comes to earthquake coverage and floods. So, I mean, you're just, we pulled it out because of the uniqueness of this building and the importance of this building and we needed to close some exposures that were there for the city. So, we would, in case something did happen for the six-month period. So, this is just that process.
I've got Alderman, Martin.
When we talked about this before, I had just, I think I had just come on board. Why would we have gone to all this trouble to become LEED, a LEED building, and not go the extra step to be certified? It's kind of like a doctor. You know, you get the list of all those doctors and they say, board certified, board certified, board certified, board eligible. Why any board certified? You know, that's, why would not we have gone, why would we have gone that extra?
No, we'll just let it go away.
Extra mile. Why would we have bothered to do all the work if we weren't going to be certified?
Let me, let me address it just a little bit maybe.
Just a second.
And I think that you can look at it from the commercial side, but we're looking at it from the city side. People like Spectrum Properties saved $800,000 by converting their buildings to LEED EB, existing building. But from the city viewpoint, just a quick thought about it is, number one is, you know, with LEED comes a certain efficiency of your operations and a certain amount of savings that come from the things that you're doing. And this certification would again indicate that the building is operating at its maximum as far as the heating and air conditioning, the geothermal, and all the other features that are going along with it. But one of the things that we don't talk about often is that these LEED certified buildings have been shown that the employees are healthier. I guess part of that is they're also happier. They have a higher market value. They have a higher rental value when you're talking in the commercial space. So, it's, it's an existing standard. Whether it'll be here, when we have an earthquake, I don't know. There may be something new that goes along with it. You go visit a city like New York City, you can't build a building in New York City unless it's a LEED certified building. Period. That, you can't build.
Well, it's another feather in our cap. I mean, you know, when people look at us and they say, oh.
It is policy. It's a policy we've chosen to go and we set an example. And, you know, I think there are a lot more examples that are happening right now, not necessarily because we did it, because they recognize there is value as far as energy savings. I had an Alderman.
Well, this is on the voting for tonight and it's $3,000 people spend or approve will take us up through mid-year. And then this will come back to us and then we can make some other critical.
And this will be part of the bigger insurance matters we talked about before. Not responsible to Alderman, Burger's question.
Got one last question?
One last question and I'll wrap it up, I promise. I'm not arguing this. I mean, I think, I think what we're doing is good. But being responsible to the tax dollars of citizens, I'm saying, okay, it's like I'm going to high school and I have an A-plus average, okay? And I go up and I get my certificate that I'm on the honor roll, okay? Now, I'm going to go apply for college. They're not necessarily care if I have that certificate or not. They care if I have the A-plus for a point of note. They don't care about the certificate, whether they got the certificate, didn't get the certificate. They don't care. They look at the grades. Same thing with us. We're LEED certified. We did all these things. We're still saving money. We're still doing water reuse. We're still doing all this. My question is, do we need the certificate? Who cares?
The certification is.
Is it going to get us?
I'm sorry.
You know? What does it get us? That's the argument. I'm just asking.
Well, my answer is, is that it shows that you've brought those, all those functions of that building back up to the same level. That's what the certification indicates is that you, your geothermal's working properly and all, the air circulation, the volume of air turnover is correct. They're just coming in to say.
They're inspecting it.
Inspection.
Inspecting.
Yes, it's more.
And that everything's been brought back up to a certain level.
So, we have to say.
Otherwise, it's like calling a check.
Is it important that I got my certificate that I've been on the honor roll?
It's not just proof.
Or is it good enough to only just take my report card?
But it's your, it has been the board's policy to have that. So, we're only ensuring what your policy is.
If you fix it.
And that may be another discussion about the LEED. We're just talking about insurance now and we need to move on.
Inspection lets you know that you're going fully functioning because if you don't have that inspection, how do you know you're not losing money somewhere with the warming of the building? And then your energy levels, you're increasing the use of your energy for the building.
Very good point, right.
Number 10, consideration Franklin Battlefield Access Road Local Agency Project Agreement for Eastern Flank Battlefield Access Improvement. Any questions?
I do hope we can move this along with.
Then, then 20 soon as possible.
That's the reason we're bringing it in. We still have questions that we've got to get worked out with T-Dot on this. We wanted to bring it to you, let you see the general layout of the contract and.
This is a general boilerplate.
Excuse me? Detour. T-Dot, yes, it's their long version. So, we are trying to, getting it short, to get it shorter with our more standard shorter version. We've been unsuccessful. However, the description in the contract is wrong. We've got to get that worked out. The description more or less is talking about what the original grant description was for Eastern Flank that we did not get, which was a million, two or something like that. So, we got to change the description, get that changed in a couple of ways. So, we're still working on that and we're pushing, trying to.
We're trying to move things as quickly as we can from us back into T-Dot's court.
And I will tell you, we're hoping to bring back to you the design PSA at your neck, you know, at the CIC, CIC meeting and in the next four weeks.
But this is actually the agreement that here's what will follow to give you $500.
I'm going to come out and comment is that making sure that we don't have the possibility of losing any money by not reacting quicker.
Our concern is them not moving as fast as we would. It's the opposite, honestly. So, we continue to, yeah, keep asking for every opportunity.
I would point out too, that with the timeframe we're looking at, if you look at the recommendation in the memo, we, there's a good possibility we'll still want that recommendation the same as far as approval with staff agreeing, staff being, the city administrator myself and the city attorney agreeing to the final language to get worked out. So, kind of like.
But that's not a voting session.
It's not a voting session, but the voting session's only.
Yes, yes.
Number 11, consideration agreement between the City of Franklin and the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for removal of low-head dam at City of Franklin Water Intakes.
As you recall, we entered into an agreement with the Harpeth River Workshod Association for a project. And that was mentioned that we would be looking to try to get some in-kind services from T-DECK. That's what this agreement is for. Those services, they have indicated they'll pay up to $189,000 for the actual removal of the dam. When we talk about the project, keep in mind, the removal of the dam's just a portion of it. There's other things going on, extreme restoration of the nature costs. With that, it will bring our total exposure down to 309,641 with the possibility of it being lower with some other in-kind services that are being tried, trying to be worked out, et cetera. So, those, we're not sure of and probably will not come back to you as an agreement there, will be smaller amounts and just be working with agencies and they take on doing something like an inspection or a study or something that will reduce some of our costs.
And we've got the federal grant money that's part of the other agreement that's around $350,000. That's the other component of this. So, we've got two different agreements that fund a good portion of this, up close to $540,000 worth of other funding or other committed elements of the project.
I have a question.
Sure.
I've had some people that live in the area here and were asking about, is it, they're going to be blasting as a part of this?
There may be some, but they're talking about trying to do it with hole ram, which is, if you know what they, you have a big ram on the end of a backhoe and you go out there and you just beat it to death. But there will be cutting of metals as far as the settling. There may be blasting, but the intent right now is not to blast. That's not as controllable as if you do the hole ram.
Well, I just, whenever this comes back again, I'd like to have an update on that because I have been asked about it.
Just to, just to comment on, we've got a HOES and I want to put my HOES on there next to the HOES that says, "The removal of the low-head dam while maintaining a pool sufficient for the city's water treatment plant to withdraw water from the Harpeth River S, permitted by ARAP, NRS, whatever all that other stuff is." I want to make sure that we understand that we're not giving up our rights under any set of circumstances to grow water from the Harpeth River that supports our water treatment plant.
That has been an understood component of this project from the beginning.
From the very beginning.
And I will tell you that T-DECK's already signed this, so we're just waiting on it through the process.
Number 12, consideration amendment number two, professional services agreement with TVG Environmental for the Harpeth River Greenway Project, City of Franklin Contract 2011-0073.
The amount of this amendment is $4,200. Do want to point out that this was reported to you at your last board meeting and has been approved by Mr. Stuckey. It was approved. We had a situation where we needed approval to go ahead with spending money to keep us from having to spend more money. We had a timeframe to get TVG working or we would have to start all over or practically all over with our testing. And it's a good thing we did because when we got the testing back from this, it came out that it was not hazardous, so we haul off the materials once it dries a little bit. But with the amount of the total contract, we're treating Mr. Stuckey's approval as a work order that we're doing it, but it actually takes a formal approval from you because you have not given him the ability to approve that total amount of contract. So, that's what this is for, is more of a, as Marshall Nigga used to say, is a cleanup.
Marshall's good at cleaning up.
But, but it wasn't contaminated, but it said something about contaminated oil, that oil is retarded away. But are we still doing?
We're still some, there's still some other testing going on as far as some testing wells, et cetera. This was the excavated material that was up in, up in the, where we did the trail excavated and piles of dirt out there that came out that there was a testing of possibly some diesel and then we did further testing. This further testing proved it was not hazardous, wasn't a problem, so we can haul it away.
Number 13, consideration of State Route 252, Wilson Pike and McQun Drive Intersection Improvements, City of Franklin Contract 2010-0152. It's an amendment.
This is amendment, in order to change the name only of who is doing the work for us and we, the city attorney has, I have a written approval from her for this amendment. And that's all it does, just changes the name of the consulting firm, same amount of money, same scope of work, et cetera, same timeframe for completion. So, that's all it is.
Same company, they're just merchants.
It's different.
Yep, got it. Number 14, consideration. Number 14. Consideration of Amendment One to Professional Services Agreement with SSR for Resident Inspection Services, an amount of $22,000 for Downs Boulevard Waterline.
If you recall, we did in a, a contract, a change order with, for that particular project with a contractor due to various issues that came up on the construction of the project. This isn't our project. We had to have the CEI services, which we hired SSR to do. Well, with the additional timeframe, of course, they have additional costs, and they're saying that they'll be able to finish this with the timeframe, with the project completion date as now stands for a cost not to exceed $22,000 recommended. And again, Shauna has, I have a written approval from Shauna's city attorney, I'm sorry, approving this.
So the increase is $22,000, or the whole project is $22,000?
No, it's additional services. It's 111 days.
111 days.
111 days of work, less additional work days. And when they're working, they have to be at it when they.
Has Luke agreed to this?
Ma'am?
Does Luke agree to this?
Luke, uh, yes. It was pre-birth agreement.
No.
For those that don't know, Luke is our city attorney's new baby that was just born. So congratulations for Shauna and Sam. Number 15. Consideration Professional Services Agreement with Jackson Thornton Utilities for Cost of Service Rates Study for Water Sanitary Sew and Reclaimed Water Systems, an amount not to exceed $53,450 for that work as described by Attachment A, Water and Sewer, and $35,000 for that work as described by Attachment B, Reclaimed Water. Excuse me. This is for the additional service, or services for additional studies by Jackson Thornton of your water, wastewater systems as far as the fees, et cetera, that need to be looked at, the cost of services, the facilities, et cetera. If you have any specific questions, I'm sure Mark can answer them. But I will tell you, also, the city attorney has given a verbal approval this time. She, you know, came today.
Twenty-five.
Of this, of this contract.
This does provide for three different studies on each category in terms of water, sanitary sewer, and the reclaimed water system. So we've got three cost of service studies essentially for the, the dollar amounts in this contract.
And this would enable us in five years to make, what's the, the time period?
Well, we know we're going to do one this next cycle for sure, and then I think we make a judgment call about when we do the other two exactly in terms of when they make sense to do them with whatever's going on in our rate structure, our budgeting and financial plan, five-year financial plan.
And it was October 2010 where we, we established that, the board established that five-year plan. This essentially goes back and validates numbers. You know, we, we had called for a series of rate adjustments over a five-year period. And this is, again, to make sure that we're on, in line, on track. And really, going back and reviewing rates on a regular basis is important, just to ensure we can capture, you know, changes in the regulatory environment and things like that. So that's, again, why we look at it in multiple years.
So this, this would make sure that we don't have any surprises at the end of this five-year plan, that.
Correct.
We don't have enough money or too much.
Of course, I said it check both ways.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
We always want to be trying to look five years out, at least on this, this stuff, I believe.
Okay.
Number 16. Consideration Contract for $24,999 between the City of Franklin and Bridges Domestic Violence Center Williamson County for Delivery Services Related to 2011-12 CBBG Homeless Prevention Program.
It's really a continuation of the homeless prevention program you got through CBBG.
Is there a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Opposition, see none?